This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
The time is now six thirty, time for our council meeting this evening. Chaplin, would you come forward and prayer? Would you all rise?
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Soudalia City Council, Mayor Pro Tem, Administrator, and their staff meet to discuss and decide important issues for the betterment of this community and all of its citizens. We're thankful for their service and dedication. We would ask your protection for all of our first responders, police, sheriff, fire, and especially this evening for the award of the firefighter of the year. For all of our ambulance, EMTs, hospital staff, they all work in health care to keep us all safe, often with their own well-being put in jeopardy. We're so thankful for all of our armed forces throughout the world who protect us from harm and who we remember as their service in creating and preserving this United States of America for 250 years, and we owe them so much. Their sacrifice probably can never be repaid to give us the safety that we enjoy today. And now as we leave this evening, please protect us and our loved ones until we meet again. All the -- this we ask in the name of your son, our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please run me to the question, please. We are the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, a fair ground, indivisible, without any injustice at all. Please be seated. Arlene, roll call, please.
Lehman?
Here.
Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
And Bliss?
Here.
Roll call being completed. Do we now go to a public hearing opening? And regarding the filing fee updates regarding the preliminary and final class, I'll refer this over to our city administrator for a little bit of an explanation.
Okay. Basically what we have here is we have a noticed a conflict within our code of ordinances where the language within the code section 5233 conflicts with the actual fee schedule in the appendix. And so since this is part of our zoning ordinances, it requires a public hearing before council can consider making the change. So this time to set aside for the public to provide any input they'd like to provide basically on this changed language. And what it -- what the changed language does is it just deletes the conflicting language out of the 5233 so that it just refers to the fee schedule. On final class, I'm sorry, I never did talk about what it was.
Does anybody have any input, any comments? Hearing none at this time, this hearing is now closed. Now is the time and place for service awards. We do have one this evening. Roger Walters, who's our cemetery director and has been with the city for over 35 years. I'd like to give you my presentation. If you'll come forward, Roger. Thank you. We also have a special award tonight. It comes out of our city fire department. It happens to be the firefighter of the year chief. The floor is here.
Thank you, sir. Colby Snap was our firefighter of the year received a plaque that was expected for a while there a few weeks back. This is the presentation of the plaque mentioned in the department. I want to give you the short background of why he was selected. I apologize to the people having access. Today's firefighter was very proud to announce our 2021 firefighter of the year, firefighter Colby Snap. Colby is married to the wife Kenny, and they have pictures of them on their car lines. They're back in the staff there. Colby started the state fire department on March 14th of 2017 in front of the search for firefighters in the city. To give a little better idea of the reasons for Colby's selection this year, I'd like to go back now to him in the department. Because by his status at the state fire department, he was hold in permanent certification license and firefighter ability certification. The firefighter willing to serve for fire attendants for often a field average instructor or class from the annual field. Progressive to the rank, he must continue to take five of the past certification tests. He has internationally written certifications that have been certified as their business firefighting for the city. Firefighter Snap had a four-year career, state district, he wanted to serve, live fire instructor, fire dedicated, fire instructor willing to, and fire officer with two certifications in his first three years. In addition to the certification he earned, he's also a professional he earns entitled firefighter. In the fire purpose, we don't often recognize individuals for their actions because the work of Cruz, and in fact Cruz was one recognized. Allen was a potential circumstances with unrecognizable, the firefighter Snap had that armor for his career. He was one of a life table worker's actions on June 28th and 29th on Decal. His endangerment was just passed and reported, an eight-month-old non-researched child. I don't know how long the child lived at that office. His actions on scene resulted in a child rape and robbing yet police turned the work up to DCAT. On April 11th of this year, he was awarded an assistive license for actions taken involving himself, burn victim, and custody by other SFP members in the working department on fire. He was picked on scene and transported by DCAT personnel to Birmingham, Kansas City, did survive and survived a day. To close all this comment, Colby's become a legitimate fine thing to do on a city shift and not involved in this activity. As we can, he makes good skills with adventures and does manage to recover all of our colleagues with generators, portable lights, rescue tools, and some apparatus. I'm very proud of that of Colby and people who have been the members of today's fire department. Fireman Snap and all the SFP personnel, who now standing down in their own positions of those who were being taken in for him to stay back for less than one or 34 years. Ladies and gentlemen, our 2021 firefighter of the year at the state fire department is the firefighter Colby Snap.
Next item we have on our agenda has to do with the retirement award. And I must say, it's an honor to do this, but it's also a sadness. I've known this person for quite a long time. Alice, would you come forward?
Alice has been with the city for 37 and a half years. Started out with the committee, yeah, committee chairman.
Full-time, first job.
First.
Part-time.
Alice, she's made the rounds, she's been the mayor's assistant secretary area, she's just...
Everything's on the back of the top.
Alice, her nomination. She's not far away.
Just a little clarification, our mayor this evening is somewhere in the northern part of Minnesota fishing in 94-degree weather. And here we are in the air. Anyway, I need approval for a motion to approve the previous session minutes. Some moves?
Second.
All those in favor?
None.
All those opposed? Hearing none, go on. Report to special boards, commissions, and committees. There are none this evening, so we'll continue on. Standing committees, the first one we're going to have is finance administration goes to Chairman Stevens.
I've got three items. Let's see, the first one deals with municipal court. Let me see if I have pretty long to finish. I probably should go through it though. Our judicial system requires that there's potential for jail time being imposed on defendant as convicted, the judge presiding over the case. It's required to advise such defendant that they have the right to be represented by counsel, and that if they cannot afford such counsel, the court will appoint an attorney for them. Unfortunately, though these rules say the defendant does not have to pay for the attorney, but are silent about who will pay for it, and of course, we have to compensate that attorney. Prior to shifting municipal court to the circuit court, the city had an agreement with the local attorney to pay $300 per case when they were appointed as defense counsel pursuant to these rules. These costs were paid out of the court cost fees that were collected through the court for municipal litigation. Since transferring the court administration to the circuit court, this leaves the compensation and funding source in question. After consulting with the city attorney and the prosecutor as well as Judge Beard, our legal counsel has indicated that this is handled differently among communities that they represent. In all but one of those communities, the court-appointed attorney is not compensated at all. The remaining community is currently considering covering these costs. Judge Beard indicated that his experience, the entity charging the defendant compensates the court-appointed attorney. Mayor Katie reached an agreement with Judge Beard that when our prosecutor recommends jail time as part of the sentence, and that the judge determines that the defendant truly cannot afford an attorney, we would compensate the court-appointed attorney $300 per case. However, no funds were budgeted for these costs. Looking back over the past few years, we've incurred $3,000 or $4,000 per year for these services. Staff recommends amending the budget to appropriate $4,500 to cover the cost of court-appointed attorneys this year. And we'll need a resolution and an ordinance.
Are there any questions from the council? Hearing none at this time. Okay, at this time, Arlene, would you read the resolution for us?
Resolution number 1927. A resolution of the city council of the city of Soudalia, Missouri, authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year 2021-2022 relating to court-appointed defense council services.
Motion to approve. All those in favor?
None.
Opposed? You got a motion. I'm sorry, need a second. Sorry about that.
The resolution was already done before. We already brought it up, we already got a resolution. I don't really understand. The difference is the problem that there is, we already have a resolution.
The resolution comes before us, that's how we do this with the vote. Yeah, the resolution, there's nothing that's happened at this point, so this resolution goes through, and the second half of this, according to the statute, goes to the ordinance. The ordinance. Now, we have a first and second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
None.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now call for the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2021-79. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022 regarding court-appointed defense council services.
Second reading. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Continue.
Bill number 2021-79. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022 regarding court-appointed defense council services.
Final passage. Roll call, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
And Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor?
Second item is a staff recommendation that involves job descriptions. Pass process of approving every job description by ordinance is not efficient or effective. Council review of the details of the individual job descriptions is not a good use of our time. Likewise, the amount of time it takes to move an ordinance through, process creates unnecessary delays in hiring and promotion. In the current tight labor market, it is all that much more necessary to be nimble. Further, any unintended consequence of resulting in job descriptions not being updated as often as they should be. Simply put, the more bureaucracy there is in the process, the less likely the management will be able to find a time for performance administrative function. Our current process of approving job descriptions by ordinance dictates that the only way we can change an ordinance is by another ordinance. Therefore, if we find a need to change every, even one word in a job description, we have to go through the process to adopt another ordinance. In order to change this staff request adopting an ordinance that repeals all pass ordinances regarding job descriptions and authorize us to have to maintain job descriptions going forward.
Any questions from the council?
I got a couple of concerns regarding this. I understand that we're not mandated by the state in order to do this, but I do think it adds a layer of transparency and accountability there that are important. Want the public's made aware through this meeting what we're doing as far as with regards to hiring and adjusting job descriptions. To as far as accountability, majority of our budget is comprised of labor, and that's our biggest ongoing expense. So I think it's, it wouldn't be a bad thing to have another layer of accountability there to make sure we're using those tax dollars as efficiently as we should be.
I completely agree with Andrew. I think it's very important that checks and balances are in place, that everybody's going in the positive, right direction, and I think it's important that we do this.
Yeah, I think there are checks and balances in place, you know, and the primary checks and balances.
And I thought about that.
If we have to approve a budget, I see if there's something about that would also be a check, but I think it's important that we have this step in.
Really, it has either this job description.
Right. If we add a new job, then you would have to...
That's going to be the case regardless? Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I just, okay, I just see it as a level of bureaucracy that is unnecessary and un...
Do you have any estimation as to how much staff time is associated with changing those job descriptions?
Yeah, and you're never going, you're not going to save the staff time.
Yeah, yeah, because you're always going to be updating the job description. So it's just a matter of bringing it to council.
And if you make it simpler to change the job description and to maintain it, then it's more likely that they will be catch up today. That is really one of the deals is since it is more difficult to change a job description, it takes longer to go through the council process, then they're less likely to do it. And we catch that all the time. You know, basically when we try to update a job description, it's usually when the position's empty or we're making some sort of changes there. And so then you have to lengthen the process because you've got at least two weeks worth of process to go take it to council before you can then post the job. So then after you post the job, then you, you know, you've got to go through the hiring process, and then you go through the notice period for them. So, you know, you're adding two weeks to an already lengthy process of trying to hire employees.
Shannon's not here. Yes, she's here. But Shannon, could you, do you have any input, you know? Would you step in?
Talk to us for a minute about this?
Absolutely. And just a few...
Hold on, Michael.
Oh, sure. Just in a few short months I've been here, that's actually been one of the things that have been brought up, even with, you know, some of the positions that currently we have posted, is that we didn't even go ahead and make any changes to job descriptions because the process does take an extra two weeks as Mr. Shaw said. So a lot of the job descriptions are still back based in 2012 when Higby came in and did the study. So I can't tell you how many job descriptions are probably out of date.
So our choices are either table is not do it, or it's going to take a pretty long period of time to go through.
Correct. We have, I mean, I can't even tell you how many job descriptions we do have, but we do have quite a few, obviously. And like I said, a lot of them have not been updated since 2012 because of process. And what we try to do, of course, is review them anytime a position comes open, and that would be the process that we would still do to make sure that there's any changes. But even as simple as changing an "and" in the job description requires council approval.
So if you look at it in that way, we're operating with job descriptions that are out of date, so you're not really, you know, people are doing the jobs that they're actually doing, but it's not in the written form. So what control are we really accomplishing?
Right, and we do have, a lot of the department heads, we do have them sign off on the job description when we offer them the position. So, you know, same thing, we're having candidates and employees sign off on job descriptions that aren't current.
Well, I guess another question, other municipalities do other, is anything of comment? I guess I'd ask the council, do you have comments from these counties that these ordinances with job descriptions? Is it a field for the other city to do?
Sure. So for most part, most of my cities do not bring their job descriptions back council review. It's normally an internal process to put those descriptions together, and I don't know that I've had any secret words for approval. Not to say that's a right or wrong, it's really up to you, how you want to do that.
Any other questions? Not hearing any, thank you for stepping up.
We are talking about, we are talking about job creation in addition to amending the job description, right?
Yeah, I guess technically yes, but, you know, as far as job creation, if we're creating positions, that's usually going to have a budget impact.
Yeah, I agree.
That would be the control I would see is the organizational structure and the budget impact really where council appropriately needs to weigh in on that. And then as far as transparency, I mean, we can, I mean, it is public record, so I mean, they are always out there available for me. You know, we could also, if, do some sort of process or, you know, doing reports to council, make a change as simply before.
Well, to me, it's more an issue of efficiency than it is transparency. I don't... We need to follow the question and how it can move forward. Any others? Call for the ordinance.
Bill number 2021-80. An ordinance changing the process for creating job descriptions for positions within the city.
Second reading. Second. All those in favor?
None.
Opposed?
Bill number 2021-80. An ordinance changing the process for creating job descriptions for positions within the city.
Final passage. Roll call, please.
Cross? Foster?
No.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
No.
Bogus?
Yes.
And Richardson?
Yes.
Five yes and three no.
Third item, let's go ahead. Soudalia Lions Club, over the past few years, has organized and hosted the pub crawl in connection to St. Patrick's Day celebrations. Due to pandemic and other things, we have canceled that for the last two years. Things are getting better, vaccination and immunity to the virus increasingly reducing the prevalence of the virus. The club's planning a similar event this fall, staff met with the organization, organizers of this event to review the plans, coordinate the activities. As with past events, Lions Club is doing a great job of planning this event in a way that draws individuals and promotes our downtown area while ensuring it's safe and not disruptive. Staff decides that with the continued working relationship, we together can suspend the open container laws during a controlled event and not let it get out of hand. Neither they nor staff takes lightly the suspension of these laws. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the ordinance to suspend the open container laws for this specific area during the specific period and only upon the conditions set forth in the ordinance. I believe we have some representatives from the Lions Club that you'd like to step up to the mic. Council, do you have any questions within? No, no.
Looking forward to your event.
I will tell you in the past we've had, we look forward today, we've had a map, there's a specific area that they are allowed to do this in, if you remember, recall. And it had previously been approved, I think, by the police department. Thank you for stepping up. Okay, glad you're here. I may be back to line. Hearing no questions, oh, there it is. There it is on the screen, there is the map. Very good. Thank you. Any more questions from anyone? Not hearing any, please read the ordinance.
Bill number 2021-81. An ordinance temporarily suspending the enforcement of city of Soudalia open container ordinance for the Soudalia Lions Club pub crawl on October 16th, 2021.
Second reading. All those in favor?
None.
Opposed?
Bill number 2021-81. An ordinance temporarily suspending the enforcement of city of Soudalia open container ordinance for the Soudalia Lions Club pub crawl on October 16th, 21.
Final passage. Second. Roll call, please.
Okay, Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross? All in favor?
Okay. Go ahead, okay. We move on to public safety. Chairwoman, you have a vote.
We have three items tonight. First one being approved record destruction request from today's police department administrative supporting bureau. And this is as a routine item, the police department has identified records that have led to reaching to retirement and requests authorization to dispose of them, and staff recommend approval.
We'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item number two is the purchase of laptop computers for the today's police department in the amount of $34,052. This is calling for an ordinance authorizing the purchase of replacement control for a laptop for today's police department.
Any questions? Adam, you may be, I have a question, just in curiosity, because I didn't see what I was looking for in paperwork, but these new ones, and maybe Bonnie can answer this also, compatibility with the ongoing outside Wi-Fi around the city?
I'm sure they would. I don't know the answer to it, but I can imagine they wouldn't.
No, shaking your head and over there.
So it's configured to use a cellular, as far as we got, or...
Okay. Okay. So it's on the cell your cell. That's what I was expecting. Any other questions? How many laptops is this, is it all of them or?
How many laptops, is it all of them or?
Uh, do you remember how many you did?
Six of them.
Twelve.
Adam, I hate to do this to you, but you stepped in the mic for the afternoon.
So, of the twelve, six, and one would go to animal control, one to replace our investigation, um, computer that we lost. Um, the others would be, would be, um, I believe two for spare possibly, and then the rest for IT to do what they do with cell or whatever he does with it.
Call for the ordinance.
Bill number 2021-82. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of replacement patrol car laptops for the Soudalia Police Department.
Second reading.
Second. I'm half asleep over here for some reason. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Bill number 2021-82. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of replacement patrol car laptops for the Soudalia Police Department.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
And the final, final item is mules connection sharing agreement ordinance. Um, this calls for an ordinance authorizing a mules connection sharing agreement bind between the City of Soudalia, Missouri and the County of Pettis, Missouri.
Any questions from the council? I believe this has to do with the ongoing 911 upgrade that we're working on. Hearing none? Please read the ordinance.
Bill number 2021-83. An ordinance authorizing a mules connection sharing agreement bind between the City of Soudalia, Missouri and the County of Pettis, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Bill number 2021-83. An ordinance authorizing a mules connection sharing agreement bind between the City of Soudalia, Missouri and the County of Pettis, Missouri.
Final passage. Second.
Second. Roll call please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
All in favor?
That being all we have for that department, Public Works. Chairman Tom Odom?
Thank you. We have six items to discuss tonight. The first item is regarding the annexation of Soudalia Tabernacle. As we discussed last meeting during the public hearing, the city received a petition from the owners for annexation for the property of located at 23299 Highway B to be annexed into the city and further for it to be zoned for C3 commercial use. As I said, most will know this area as Soudalia Tabernacle. We received no comment during the hearing nor since. Statutorily required fourteen days has passed in the, in the, since the hearing, and council has now considered the annexation. So, we find the annexation to be reasonable and necessary to proper develop of the city and that the city has the ability to furnish municipal services to the area.
Any questions? Call for the ordinance.
Bill number 2021-84. An ordinance approving the annexation of the Soudalia Tabernacle into the City of Soudalia, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Bill number 2021-84. An ordinance approving the annexation of the Soudalia Tabernacle into the City of Soudalia, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
And Lehman?
Yes.
All in favor?
Second item. As part of ongoing strategies to bring solid waste costs under control, commercial services were discontinued. This decision was based, was also based on the premise that private enterprises were readily available to provide these services and in fact, were already providing them to many of the customers. Further, the aging of the equipment used for the part of the operation put us in a position that we need, that we needed to either invest in new equipment or stop this part of the operation. We purposely left the fee structures in the code of ordinances for some time to wind down the operations and collect the past service fee balances. The staff recommends it is now time to remove the reference, references to commercial trash services from our code of ordinances and fee schedules for simplification's sake.
Questions? Hearing none? Please read the ordinance.
Bill number 2021-85. An ordinance to amend Chapter 48 Solid Waste and Fee Schedule of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Soudalia, Missouri by amending and removing reference to commercial solid waste collection and commercial recycling services and amending rate for monthly service on duplexes.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Bill number 2021-85. An ordinance to amend Chapter 48 Solid Waste and Fee Schedule of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Soudalia, Missouri by amending and removing reference to commercial solid waste collection and commercial recycling services and amending rate for monthly services on duplexes.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thirdly, in connection with providing safe water, the Water Department utilizes monitoring equipment to ensure the proper amount of chlorine is present along with the correct levels of pH. Staff issued a request for bid to purchase four new units of total chlorine pH and temperature analyzers. Only one bid was received, and such bid did not meet the bid specifications. The unit bid was, would not interface with our supervisory control and data acquisition system. Therefore, staff recommends formally rejecting the bid to close the process.
Entertaining a motion to that process to reject?
To move.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion to pass.
Fourth item is a change order, uh, for CNI services for 2018 water system improvement. Uh, this will allow ESNS to continue providing, uh, construction, engineering, and inspection services until the substantial completion has been met. This is a change order for $13,910.
Discussions, questions? Hearing none? The ordinance please.
Bill number 2021-86. An ordinance authorizing change order number one for engineering and inspection services.
Second reading.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Bill number 2021-86. An ordinance authorizing change order number one for engineering and inspection services.
Final passage. Second.
Roll call please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
And Dawson?
Yes.
All in favor?
The fifth item we have is a final change order for rail, for the rail spur in regards to Phillips Hardy and Capitol Railroad. Uh, I should point out that this is a no charge change order. Uh, what this does is this moves the completion date from December 17th to December 20th. Uh, the reason why for that is because time just wasn't used efficiently on, uh, the Phillips Hardy. Uh, their previous job pushed back the time for dirt work to be done properly on time.
Give me a year. You, you're pushing.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I beg your pardon, I'm sorry. December 17th, 2020 to December 20th, 2020.
Okay.
Is it?
You mean 21.
Uh... Is there anything else I need to add to that?
Director Audrey, did they give any cause for why they, Phillips Hardy took so long in what they were doing?
Brenda, microphone please, I'm sorry.
When we counted days with the contract, they delayed 35 days to start the project, but they finished the dirt work, when you take into account bad weather days, within three days of completion date. So, they started late, but they met close to the date that they were supposed to. We then had a gap in time before the rail contractor could start because Phillips Hardy could not give them the date by which the dirt work would be complete. So, it, it threw everything off, but not enough to throw anyone into liquidated damages.
Okay.
So, this simply closes out the project for the federal grant and explains why there were no liquidated damages to the Federal Rail Administration.
Okay. And there, there was also the unacceptable soils that they had to remove, which was wrong.
Oh, that's true, yes. That was also explained in the memo that you got.
We had about thirty days worth of, uh, what they called gumbo, bottomless, uh, clay, basically.
It had to be removed, and then there were some HAZ materials that were also found where there were some petroleum, uh, products that had been left in the soil.
And then we paid Capitol Rail a little extra to add another crew to make up some of the time that Phillips Hardy and the county approved those samples. Had some storage issues.
They had storage issues because of the weather and the mud. Yep. I mean, if you actually go through the history, and we have all the inspection logs, and the two project managers sat down and went through every day to make sure there were no liquidated damages owed, we could not come up with liquidated damages on that rail project.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions? Call for the ordinance.
Bill number 2021-87. An ordinance approving change order number six extending the final completion date for unsuitable soil work.
Second reading.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Bill number 2021-87. An ordinance approving change order number six extending the final completion date for unsuitable soil work.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
And Bogus?
Yes.
That one is all in favor?
Call for the next ordinance, please.
Bill number 2021-88. An ordinance approving change order number 4.1 extending the rail spur's substantial and final completion date.
Second reading.
Second. All those in favor? Uh, opposed?
Bill number 2021-88. An ordinance approving change order number 4.1 extending the rail spur's substantial and final completion date.
Final passage.
Roll call please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
All in favor?
The final item I have tonight is the resolution to accept a TRIM grant, uh, for tree re-inventory. Uh, this is a $10,000 grant, uh, that we received, well, at least since I've been on council for this short time. So, this just allows us to take inventory of our trees during Soudalia.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Excuse me, do you need to read this?
I need to.
Please.
It's Resolution 1928. A resolution authorizing an application by the City of Soudalia, Missouri for a TRIM, a tree resource improvement and maintenance TRIM grant through the Missouri Department of Conservation.
Having a first and second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
That's all I have.
Committee to vote. Chairman Dawson?
First item I have is an ordinance, uh, approving the replat of four, uh, lots of the Rancho Marietta addition of the city, uh, located roughly at 16th and Marshall. Uh, this has been through planning and zoning, they've, uh, recommended approval.
I have a question. Evidently, that gives a bit in the middle, right? Reason I'm asking is because the homes west of there, we had a lot of problems with the company, uh, Jim Francis. His house got flooded, that ditch comes down through there. And I didn't know if that property east of him was in the flood plain or not. Evidently, it's not. It's going to the house west of that area. He got flooded that one year, and he had a lot of, about twenty dollars worth of damage to his home.
The flood plain's shown that it's-
It's not.
It's not. It's clear down here, these are the properties we're talking about right here.
All right. Because that ditch runs down, because it really gets, uh, above its normal. It's not a flood plain, Mike, it's okay.
Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none? Call for the ordinance, please.
Bill number 2021-89. An ordinance approving the replat for lots 3, 4, 5, and 6 of the Rancho Marietta addition in the City of Soudalia, Missouri and dedicating public roadways in Eastman to show on set flat to public use.
Second reading.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Bill number 2021-89. An ordinance approving the replat for lots 3, 4, 5, and 6 of the Rancho Marietta addition in the City of Soudalia, Missouri and dedicating public roadways in Eastman to show on set flat to public use.
Final passage. Second.
Roll call please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
All in favor?
Second item I have is an ordinance accepting, uh, the warranty deed for the property located at 119 West Main. Uh, Director Simmons, correct me if I get this wrong, but, uh, so the, uh, property was identified by staff as being in, in danger of becoming another building that we tear down. Uh, and so, we, the property owner was in town for, I believe, a week, maybe two weeks maximum. Uh, so while that property owner was in town, uh, staff tracked him down, uh, and council directed staff to go ahead and negotiate and, and come to an agreement to purchase that building.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Call for the ordinance, please.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash ninety, an ordinance approving the acceptance of a warranty deed for property located at one nineteen West Main in the city of Soudaya, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash ninety, an ordinance approving the acceptance of a warranty deed for property located at one nineteen West Main in the city of Soudaya, Missouri.
Final passage. Second.
Roll call, please.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
Third item I have is a ordinance vacating the east-west alley between the properties located at one eleven West Fifth and one oh eight West Sixth Street. So, we received a petition by the Liberty Center on beha- uh, on behalf, or, from Jill Fisher, who's present here if we have any questions. Uh, but, so it's my understanding that they're looking to use that back lot as an area for live performances.
So, this basically just connects the two, uh, two lots, uh, together. If I could find it here on Beacon real quick, or... Am I missing that here? Hold on a minute. What's the east-west street? Fifth Street?
Sixth Street.
So, basically, the alley between those two properties, this is Liberty Center, they also own this lot. So, if we vacate that alley, then it basically creates one lot. So, then there are two things will happen. One is that their broker licenses to the premises, and so the premises will include both of those lots, as opposed to now, there's three separate. Um, and then, if they add an event, which they plan to have alcohol at those events, technically, they couldn't have alcohol in the alley, because that's a public, public spot, so they'd have to be subject to open containers. So, they'd have to not let people cross the alley with an open container. So, it's just a vacation alley, but then maintaining the Eastman for the utility allows them to basically do what they want to do, or what they propose to do by combining the two lots.
Sure.
You'd be vacating just behind the Liberty Center, I believe, not the alley portion to the east. And then there's Lori Ward and the business owners there on Ohio have bought some space from us, um, and, and, uh, there is actually the ability to have an alleyway there, um, for their access and for emergency vehicle access there.
So, the northwest, or north-south areas, you're, um, on the cursor there, you're, you're basically selling them property so that they can have that...
Correct, yeah, and then that's been, that's been completed.
I like it, I think it's a great idea, maybe get some people downtown.
Sure, come forward.
You may have to pull the mic down a bit.
Yeah.
Hate to do that to you, but we have outside lines, people need to hear.
I'm Annalisa Linus, and this is my daughter Melissa Atkinson. We are owners of Stateford Floral. Um, we, the, a small section of the property has been purchased. Uh, we have a copy of that deed here. It was purchased by Stephen Ward, and, uh, they were not notified of this here. I just happened to see it, because I subscribe to these meetings. So, we, we're not opposed, we just have a few concerns. Um, one of them is, uh, we will be owing, I mean, owning part of that lot eight, um, you know, with, with, with the wards. Uh, it was just thought that it would be easier just to purchase just one owner, and then later on, you know, divide it up.
So, the biggest concern is, um, when we're, if we have that alley, like, will fire trucks be able to come, like, through there? Like, I mean, how would, how would that work around that corner? It's a pretty sharp corner if that whole thing is blocked off. Like, that's one of the questions that we have, is how would that, how would we be able to access that? Like, and the trash, how would, if that's all blocked off, how would, you know, our trash trucks come and, you know, dump our trashes? And, you know, questions like that, those are some of the concerns that we have. Um, we, I mean, we're, we would just like to know if it would be, you know, evened out, if the sidewalk could be taken out, so it actually could be an alley, or...
The curb.
The curb, yeah, I mean, so we're just, there's just a couple of questions that, that we have. We would like for this to be tabled, so we could kinda work out some details, if that would be possible.
Yeah, they just weren't notified ahead of time to be able to, you know, have...
You're talking about this area here?
Right.
Okay, that's not an alley now?
Well, we...
The alley we're talking about here is right here.
Right, right, but that, for, for that to come around, like, there will, there won't be, that corner is really sharp. So, like, if you say there's a fire, or there's a, or whenever that, like, Lori Ward's trash is in that corner, where the, the alley would be abandoned. So, in order for, like, trash trucks and things like that to come through there, how would that, how would that work?
The trash trucks can't even go around that corner. With that fencing there, they can't even go around the corner to get in. They can get in on our sides, on the, on the Stateford Floral side, they can get in on one side, but the...
There's a sidewalk there.
Right.
So, they roll our trash can out into the street, now that the fence is there.
Right. And a fire truck wouldn't be able to get in through there, the corner is too sharp to be able to get through there.
See, what I'm, what I'm saying is, that's, that's an issue now, because there is no alley there, but you're actually, you're actually on their property right now with the, with the trash, and their property line comes right up to your, the back of your building.
No, because we, because Lori bought that property, and we're buying it from them, yeah.
Yeah, by the, by, at the twelve.
So, technically, so, yeah, we've all, yeah.
How wide the strip is Lori buying it?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
How wide is, I'm assuming she bought a strip that's basically running north-south, along the east side of that line?
According to this, it's twenty-two feet.
Chief, I saw your hand come up, would you care to address anything here?
Okay, alright, good to know.
Thank you.
Okay. So, our, our biggest thing is, you know, if we could, you know, maybe just, you know, not follow through on this right now until we could, the wards and, and the Steck House and I, you know, in our group, could talk about it and maybe figure something out, um, you know, because we, the wards weren't even, uh, notified of this, that this was gonna be on, on the agenda today.
The, the property has been purchased, is that not correct?
Yes.
Yes, on the twelve, by the wards, on the twelve, right. It says, yeah, but...
I guess I'm, I'm still not understanding what's your objection to the vacation of this alley?
Because, because of the, just because of the access, like, that, that corner, trying to get out is, I mean, that's the biggest concern, is just the access there, like, there's a utility pole in the middle, we're gonna have moved over. But, there, as far as...
If we drive through, the curb, if we drive through, now, the curb is here, you know what I mean? So, we have to, you, you can't go, you, you almost can't dri- drive through there. I mean, we, we, we have a little, like, a little dock area where we load and unload. Well, if we pull up our, 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 our delivery trucks right up to the dock, there's enough room for, to, to drive through, so that the curb is right there, you know, so, if there would be a possibility to remove that curb and bring it down further back, so that there would be more room to get through there.
But, I was, you're again talking about down here, right?
Excuse me?
You're, you're talking about down here, where I've got the cursor, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay, how does that affect this alley here? This alley here is what we're talking about.
Okay. The trash trucks can't get through there, because that, how will they get the trash out then?
You're...
Where, where, you see what I'm saying, I mean, we...
Where, where is your trash pickup located in that?
So, like, on the, behind Lori's building, so if you go to the right, up, just up, right there in that corner, that's where her trash is at.
Ours is on the far end, and then the Steck House is right in the middle.
Yeah, but again, that's in this area, not in this area.
Right.
Right, so how...
Now, in the alleyway, will it be all the way in the, in the red area?
You don't have an alleyway there.
Well...
Yeah, there is, there is now, because we, that's the part that, that's the part that Lori purchased.
Right.
No, not that area.
Yeah, not that area, well, if that's, you're, you're pointing out the, the alleyway.
Yeah.
Okay, but, okay, it would have to be further back this way, because...
Yeah, the, the outline in red there is what we're talking about.
Right.
That's the issue at, right now.
Okay.
Is, is the issue in front of council is whether or not to vacate that red, red outline.
Right, so if that is vacated, how will the trash trucks get through there? That's what we're asking.
Is that why you bought, that property was bought, because you're...
Right, but they won't be able to get through there, they won't be able to get through there.
See, our area, the twenty-two feet are from the back stack this way. So, that red area is in our space. See, that's what I'm saying, I mean, would, would be, be able to just to put this on hold until we can get with the wards and people that weren't aware of what was going on can talk about it? Because if you're, if that's the area, our area, the twenty-two feet is further back this way. It's... Yeah.
So, you're concerned that the trash car will be able to go through?
Yeah, or anybody even goes through there.
Right, like even a, a large car, like, turning that side.
Yeah, won't be able to go through there.
Right, right, because, yeah, like, if there, if that sidewalk or that curb was removed, then they could drive through there, the trucks, the, the, any cars could drive through there. And as I was, like, delivery, like, for our businesses and things like that.
You're talking about this curb down here?
Yes.
Well, and, well, on the other side, too.
We're just asking if that could be a possibility, since that other one is gonna be abandoned. It's gonna be hard for them to go, come through there in and out.
See, and I, I printed out the, the map that was put on there, but it's not even on there.
We're just asking if it could be tabled, so we could get some more information and...
To the wards and students, everyone.
Ms. Brenda, is there any comments or concerns that you could use to address theirs?
Regular trash, you know, didn't feel regular.
I'm just wondering how the people in the middle of the block are getting their trash removed as it is, if it, as a dumpster, I believe, but, um, I think the abandonment should be to that twenty-two foot mark, whatever that is that we, we did for Lori, wouldn't wanna go all the way to the end of our building, by any means. Um, and I don't know about back, trash trucks backing up the alley, if that's appropriate, to get to Lori's trash bin, um...
Well, there's, there's the other issue of getting the truck over that curb, I think is what they're also bringing up, is that...
Sure.
I think that's something that, that's a private enterprise, your side needs to have, take a look at, and come to the city on a separate matter. It may have to go to planning and zoning, I'm not really sure, but it, it, it would have to be approved, because you, what you're virtually doing is taking the property that you bought, turning it into an alley, but it's a closed-end alley. And you've got private enterprises involved on, on both sides of your trash pickup. I'm just looking at this roughly, myself looking at this, and to me, you'd almost have to back in to pick up the trash. But, that could be accomplished, though. Yeah, right now, you're going across their property to do it, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the trash bins are, have fitters in ours, on that.
Okay, so how are you getting through it now? So, your trash pickup is done by, they just roll it out and hook it up?
We want to, yes. Yes, yeah. Is Lori here?
Director Simmons, did you have something you wanted to say?
The property that they're saying that they have to purchase on, on the twenty-two feet, Joe, it's not recorded according to this map, so, you know, if you move that line, you're twenty-two feet over, whatever their purchase was, does that cast, still capture your, and...
It does, yeah.
But there's no, we didn't have anything to go off of that would've shown that twenty-two foot purchase that they have, because evidently not recorded, but the recorder did, or it showed up on that, please. Okay, it was recorded on the May fourth.
Yeah. Council, purpose?
Now, Lori, or how, how are we describing this abandonment?
Can we do it minus the twenty-two feet that the, uh, they purchased?
That's what it should be, because it's, unless it's recorded, it would show it. Well, the, I'm, what I'm saying, the Liberty Center property, correct me if I'm wrong, where the Liberty Center is, it's gonna be twenty-two feet further east than the property they purchased for the lot, right? Or, or they purchased the lot and they banned, or they sold Lori Ward twenty-two feet, so there's a twenty-two feet jog in their property, so we're gonna make sure we are moving, we're banning the alleyway north of the vacant lot that they have, not banning the alleyway south of the property where the Liberty Center is, which is fine if you're... And it's already fenced, so, so we can gate it, too, right? I mean, so, I mean Lori doesn't generate, I'm, Lori's not here to ask, but I assume she doesn't generate that much, that you could deal with it?
I have a question, you happen to know Lori's trash, it was picked up, apparently hers is on that northwest corner of her building there. Truck comes, does it go straight through? Does it come out on Ohio, or come in from Ohio? Then you've got your answer, let truck come back down that alley and pick up her trash.
Yeah.
There's your answer.
Yeah, they'll be at the back end, or...
If they're going through now, then they're back...
Yeah, they get it, it's, it's, they have years.
Counsel?
I can do it.
Brenda, I'm gonna have to refer to you on that one.
If, if, where's your dumpster now? Is it all the way, is it just right behind the building at fifth, or Sixth and Ohio? Your corner is Sixth and Ohio, you're out of the corner, is just right behind your business?
Yeah, yeah.
So, what would be the need for cutting the curb then, if you're, if I think it's fine?
We're, we're okay, we're talking, we, we are, uh, concerned about that house and the wards. For our, we, Stateford Floral, all big issues is, is the curb, you know, on our side, because we can't drive through now because of that curb. We have to, we, we wouldn't be able to park our, our trucks, our loading, our loading dock, uh...
We've got to, we, we wouldn't be able to park our, our trucks, our loading, our loading dock, uh, in order to be able to get through. But only to, uh, because of the curb. So, uh, you know, we would want to see it, is, if that curb would be through. And, you know, maybe I go check something, you go grab that up a little bit or something. But on Lori's side, first, you know, we're all talking, we're concerned with wards and that, truck abandoned is a problem with that.
Another issue is we've got utility service back there, we've got multiple poles back there, and that is a concern as well, if we have any, any utility service, is there a capable back there to work on that? Uh, I do, I really think that if we could give a little more information, that would be, you know, that would be appreciated. What really needs solving, everybody's going to, I'll just, so, I mean, we could, again, what should we table it, come back every time we table more information?
Whenever we're vacating alley, not the east. So, so Joe, I think that provides access for the utilities, if, I think.
How, because if, how they're going to have access, if they're, you fence all the way.
Like?
You connect, you connect the building, and you put the fence all the way across the alley.
Well, that's why I asked him about the gate. Yeah, that's why I asked him about a gate, because Joe said he'd probably gate that area where the east one is, so that, that's an issue team up. We, we either tear down his fence, or reopen his gate. So he's put a certain type of gate, not east.
A gate from all the way.
Yeah. Or run the roof, the band, uh. Oh, yeah, there's a loading dock. It's not on the back, it's in the front. And getting your band.
Okay, so we're not talking about a permanent fence, we're talking about a gate that can be opened and closed when needed for. Would that actually?
I put a fence around the lot with gates.
Would that be?
I think, I think as a consideration, we would, we would like to, yeah.
She's not here. Counsel, please.
I think it'd be fair to table this, let it find us more information. It's not a life debt situation here.
Well, have you got any schedules? It's a timing issue for us, we started, we're spending one of those.
And when do you plan to start that? What? So if we were to say we would table it until the next council meeting, would this be, is that sufficient, or is that too much time per? So then if we come back to the property office and say, as you said, at the council meeting, those that are concerned and have something to say, that's going to be your time to come? Otherwise, it's going to be a book in this place.
It'd be, it'd be good to, uh, have that worked out before the council. Well, it'd be good to see if legal is accurate too. Uh, Beacon, I think, you got any idea how often they can update?
I think it's hidden, I don't know how, how often they. Yeah, and, and I don't, I. So then what we're talking about is vacating it to the edge of wherever that is. That line is there, this way, right?
If they own both sides of it, is there any other notice that needs to be done to Lori Ward?
No, I mean, the, the, the notice that has to be done is when the property's been abus, what we're talking about basically.
So then should, there's no notice needed, yeah, okay.
And, and, you know, just from my simplistic look at it, there are two different issues here. One is this area.
That's the property issue, that's not, yeah, that's nothing to do with us.
Yeah. And, uh, how they're getting their trash now, or have been in the past until they purchased the twenty-two feet, was they were going across this property to get their trash.
Yeah, trespass.
Well, they were allowed, I guess, then, yeah. Um, and, and now that we're talking about this, then, and putting up, and them using their properties by putting the fence up to use their property is, is created a concern. So, you know, this has to be resolved regardless of whether we just vacate alley or not.
Yeah.
And it sounds like that's in the process of being resolved by selling them twenty-two feet. I would assume nobody's going to park in that twenty-two feet, and everybody's going to access their, their business on the west side of their property.
Yeah. So the only side, that, I mean, that, that block, I mean, obviously, I know it's, we could talk to City Council, moving that curb, but that's what we wanted, if that's going to be abandoned, will we, so if this is gone, will we need to unload stuff?
Well, even if, even if it's not, if Joe says you can't drive across, and he wouldn't know Joe, but if he said they can't drive across my property to get to your trash anymore. Just because things have changed, you kind of got an issue to address, which is what we're trying to get together.
Right, it's kind of, I mean, I'm, I'm. I don't know, we're both, we just, we just need a sit around solution. Want to make sure of everything, we don't want something to happen in the way we're on hold. We wouldn't have, but hold on, you, you know, it's all, we can, it's actually.
Yeah, I think Council and Bogans have a good recommendation. You guys seem, in two weeks, you'll want.
I want to make a motion to retable this, you know, all parties concerned, if ever, because it's, it's, it was before the next, uh, council meeting.
I was trying to say, I, I, I think we need to put a timeframe on that instead of just.
Do I hear a second?
I think she was trying to modify.
Because they're not putting a timeframe on there, and we don't want to hold Mrs. Joe up.
Right.
So we want to put that timeframe on there, that, uh, this needs to be res, uh, tabled or resolved by or before the next council. So that at the next council meeting, they can.
So the motion on the floor is to table this action on this particular piece, abandonment of this property. To, uh, to the next council meeting with the status in it that this needs to be resolved between these two parties by that time. Agreeing?
Can I also clarify, so the next meeting is June twenty-first?
Right.
Thank you.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All with some favor? Oppose? Hearing none, this is now tabled. Thank you for your patience, and thank you for everybody's input on this one. That's all I have, you're on. Okay, thank you. Okay. There are no appointments tonight.
There's, yes.
There is. Sorry about that. Couldn't we hear them then?
Yes, two members of the City Council from Mayor John Tady. Uh, new appointments, Dubacca Regional Health Center Board of Trustees, Dr. Paul Basset, M.D., seven seventeen West Six, four-year term ending June twenty-five. Cherry Board, Byron Matson, seven oh five West Six, three-year term ending June twenty-four. And all the remaining of these are all reappointments. Police Personnel Board, Kim Graves, nineteen oh one South Monatol, five-year term ending, uh, June twenty-sixth. Today Historic Preservation Commission, Becky Emhauser, seventeen oh five Hedge Apple Drive, three-year term ending seven twenty-four. John Simmons, twenty-three oh six First Street Terrace, three-year term ending July twenty-four. Today Public Library Board, um, there's a correction on those. Byron Matson, seven oh five West Sixth Street, three-year term, seven one twenty-one to June thirty twenty-four. Michelle Franklin, for a three, the P.O. Box twenty-two oh one, for a three-year term, seven one twenty-one to June thirty twenty-four. And Reva Woodward, seven hundred South Missouri, three-year term, seven one twenty-one to June thirty twenty-four. And the last one is Zoning Board of Adjustment, Drew Bliss, six oh seven South Beacon Avenue, five-year term ending June twenty-sixth. And Kevin Wade, twenty-two twenty-two West Second Street, five-year term ending June twenty-sixth.
The whole group. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All with a favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Liquor licenses, please.
We have one new license and one renewal. The new license is Ian Adams, doing business today Alliance Club, fourteen ten South Missouri, for a picnic license. And a renewal license for Steve Swapper, doing business Griller Sales and Service, fifteen ten West Henry, for a wholesale liquor license.
That should appear in white. All with a favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Any items from the council? City Administrator?
Juneteenth is coming up, uh, Saturday, the nineteenth of June, uh, big celebration going on.
I, uh, from the, as, as your mayor pro tem, and listening to the radio the other day, uh, Charlie brought up on K D R O about all the things that are going on in the city. And, and he kind of referred to this as, we've got to have some patience. We've got streets tore up, we've got water lines going in, and it's all for the betterment, but it just takes time to get it all accomplished. And I noticed today in one of the areas, they've got pretty much everything covered up, and they're testing the lines, so that area will be pretty much finished here shortly. So, uh, improvements take time, and they take patience from everybody involved, and all I can say is it's for the betterment of everyone. Anybody from the audience have anything for us tonight?
Hearing none, I want to attend a motion to adjourn.
Still no.
Okay. All with a favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for the record.
I believe it. I think Rihanna. Let me tell them. Yeah. He's alright. I love him. I believe. But we're all like in school, so we can. And a one-year-old, so we're like two, fifteen. Who is that? Are you being like swearing in here? I can go in my office and grab this. Well, see, a new one tonight? Yeah, yeah, if you want to get in, we'll just do it tonight, and I'll go in the office, and I'll be over there. Yep, I do. Take care.